I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Thank you all for coming. I'd like you to join, stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yay.
This goes asynchronous.
I think that was asynchronous.
Not quite.
I was waiting for Milt to add something to it.
Yes, I know. I think of that often. Okay. Um. Everybody's here except for Josh. And are there any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, one adjustment tonight, we're going to remove C three. C three is being taken off the agenda.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meeting for October seventh.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I vote for I as well. Personnel, motion to approve the nomination of Madison Kirby as Winthrop Grade School, grade five teacher. Is anyone going to, well, let's hear the motion.
I move. Okay, go ahead.
I move that we approve the nomination of Madison Kirby as the Winthrop Grade School, grade five teacher.
Second.
Thank you. Would anyone like to say a few words? Sorry, I interrupted you, Ms. Shumway.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Dykett.
I know that, um, well, I was looking at the application and the, the application does say a one-year position.
Yes. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna wait for, for Jolene or Jeff to say that. I was gonna ask to modify the motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, is anyone going to introduce her?
It's like Jolene is.
I would like to.
Okay, Ms. Randall.
Yeah. So Madison comes to us with a background, behavioral background and also in early education. And she was, before coming to our school, a long-term sub at the middle school. And hopefully Ms. Chris isn't too upset with us. Um, and she just started at the grade school with us a couple of weeks ago. And I've met and had an opportunity to sit with Megan several, Megan Madison, several times in the last couple of weeks. And every time I meet with her, she's very, very excited and motivated. But her thing is, is making connections with kids. And she believes that consistency is like, is so important for kids. And so she's thrilled to have the opportunity to stay with these kiddos for the year. So we welcome her to our staff.
Thank you very much. Mr. Superintendent?
I would like to, for this motion and for the others, they are all one-year positions. So if I could ask that the, the person who made the motion in second, please accept the, the modification of, um, what a Madison Kirby, Winthrop Grade School, grade five teacher for a one-year position. Who made the motion?
Joe did. Joe, you're muted.
Joe, do you, you, Joe?
Joe, you're muted.
Joe, you're muted. Oh.
Okay. I thought amendment procedure is that the second person, the person who seconded goes first. But I'll accept it anyway, okay?
Thank, who was the, who was the second?
I was.
Shumway?
Yes, I'll, I'll accept the change.
Thank you very much. You're probably right. Um, any, any other discussion? Is, um, Ms. Kirby with us this evening?
Do not see her.
No, I do not see her.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. Welcome, Ms. Kirby. I'll entertain a motion to approve the nomination of, uh, Joe Seal, Jo- Jocelyn?
Jocelyn.
Jocelyn Gray as Winthrop Grade School teacher for one year.
So moved.
Okay.
Who said that? Jana?
I did. I moved it, Jana seconded.
Oh, okay, thank you. And, um, Ms. Randall, are you on again?
I am.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. So Ms. Gray comes to us with 13 years of educational experience. She has experience at elementary, middle and high school with a background in social studies. She joined us in the middle of September. And she came on after we had just started school and it was quite a busy hubbub kind of time. And she just came on with such comfort and ease. And she's just continued to be that, that, that whole pleasant demeanor about, uh, about her. Um, she's pleased again to have that opportunity for the consistency with the second grade students and having the opportunity for that one-year position. So we welcome her also to Winthrop Grade School.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we'll take the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yeah.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes five zero. Uh, I'll entertain a, to approve the nomination of Nathan Mana as Winthrop Middle School Math and Science teacher for one year.
So moved.
Second.
And I, I see Ms. Chris is all queued up, ready to go. Off you go then, Ms. Chris. Please.
You're muted, Karen.
Thank you, Jim. Um, Nathan comes to us, he is relocating to Maine from New Hampshire due to his wife being relocated. He has graduated from the, from New England College with a Bachelor's of Education in math and science. He graduated in 2015. He has been working for two different school systems. His position this year is actually teaching sixth grade science. Really great references and I look forward to welcoming, welcoming him on staff.
And Nathan is with us, if you wanted, if you want to shoot question, no, you can't shoot questions, but if you want him to say something.
Hi, Nathan.
Hi, everybody, how's it going?
Good.
But, how are you doing?
I'm doing well, I just got home, so.
After a busy school day?
Yes, yes.
Well, we're so glad that you joined us, so you can hear those nice things about you.
That's good, yeah.
Is there any other, um, discussion, folks?
Chairperson Guyer, I don't have, I don't have any discussion for this, but I would like to say something about all the candidates after, after you take the vote.
Okay, will do. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I'm yes as well. Motion passes five zero unanimously. Welcome aboard, Mr. Mana, and thank you so much. We wish you well.
Yes.
Thank you all so much.
You're very welcome. Uh, Mr. Superintendent?
I just want to add, some of you may be, may be wondering, all of these positions were initially hired as, uh, well, at least the initial three were hired as till December. But that's why they were not on the board before, they were, they were just contracted. Um, looked through the financials at this point, and I'd mentioned before about the work that I'd done and Colleen had done to prepare the data for me. And looking at the possibility of changing some CARES Act funding, more than you probably need to know. But I just want you to know that financially, we are able to keep all these, the COVID relief teachers in place for the entire year. And so, uh, all of these people that we're hiring are intended to be hired for one-year contracts and we have the funds to support that.
Is Mr. Burnham a remote teacher?
Uh, he is, he's a full-time teacher, he's not a one-year contract.
Right. I just was wondering where, uh, Mr. Mana was fitting in.
Uh, my, this is Kristen inside, or I just, my understanding is that he's actually going to be in whose classroom? Karen's right.
For the beginning, he is going to start filling in for Mr. Burnham. As we progress through the year, it depends on what happens with COVID. It depends on with, uh, remote learning positions. Um, and it also depends on if I can find, um, a certified long-term sub for Mr. Burnham's classroom, then I will morph, uh, Mr. Mana's position into, uh, uh, science slash math so that we can meet the needs of the students along with the teachers.
Okay.
So in other words, he's, he's gonna do anything we want him to.
Very good, thank you.
Good call.
Superintendent, report, please.
Uh, a couple of things that are wrong here, I don't know how much information, but when, um, Chairperson Guyer and I met, then the pre-committee meeting, um, she asked me about the status of pay-to-play was because with the, the strange going-ons of this fall and, and activities and such, uh, the administrative team had decided that it didn't make sense that we, um, collect activity fees, at least for this fall and probably not for this year. Uh, but I had not informed the board of that, so I wanted to make the board aware of that. And, um, I'm not sure there's any, we didn't feel there was any motion that needed to be made, but, uh, we would, we are not collecting activity fees at this point and, and wanted to just inform you of that. Um, related to that, but not specifically right now, is, uh, the, we had quite a lengthy conversation about, uh, when we do collect the activity fees, how tho- those fees should be accounted for. And I don't want to say expended, but certainly how they, how they should not be account, how they should not be, um, I don't know what the right word is, swept into, uh, the funding at the end. And, uh, Chairperson Guyer gave me a very nice history of, um, of what happens, what's supposed to happen with those funds. And my job is to make sure that does incur.
With a little bit of passion involved. Shumway?
Um, I just have a quick question. With, I know that we had talked about allowing certain sports to happen for the fall. I just want to, um, ask if we are holding any clubs or plan to hold any clubs at this point?
For the remainder of the fall?
Or just if there's been any discussion about it, I don't recall if we discussed that at all.
Well, we haven't discussed it at the, well, except, you know, a little bit a while ago at the board, at the committee level. And I know Mr. Burnham is on this somewhere, but I know he did try to recruit some additional people to look at some types of activities or any types of things after school. And it was not successful in, in getting people to do that, particularly at the middle school, which is where we have nothing right now.
So I guess my question was more of the, the clubs that we typically have each year running. Um, I don't know, I know in the past we would have French club or so on and so forth. I didn't know if those sorts of things were meeting in a safe way, of course, but I just was curious.
Math club, civil rights club, those things. Uh, Ms. Chris has a couple of words.
Um, uh, Kristen, at, at the middle school, we have, they haven't started meeting yet because we're still easing into the year. But I have, my civil rights team will be, uh, beginning to meet, they're gonna meet through Zoom. The yearbook team will, which we don't usually start until November anyway, the yearbook committee will meet through Zoom. Um, and, uh, there was, oh, and student council is looking at meeting through Zoom. It'll probably be, you know, two meetings a month and one cumulative project at the end of the year. But those advisors felt very strongly that they at least continue, um, the push to have children in a social setting with a community purpose.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
But I, can I just, um, take advantage of this, of this opportunity? Uh, Colleen, could you make sure we add that, uh, to the administrative team agenda? Because I, I, I'm sorry, Ms. Shumway, I actually misunderstood the question. Um, I, I think there's no reason that we shouldn't be looking at, um, those types of clubs. I was thinking differently, um, that we shouldn't be thinking, at least discussing, uh, the possibility of having them. Because I think like the rest of you, there's a real desire for the students to have opportunities to be involved in, in different activities. And so, uh, we, we should discuss that further.
Mr. Stone?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, at the high school, uh, we're doing some similar things that Ms. Chris was responding to. Um, but for example, the fall play, which is gonna be the winter play, we just got up and running and they're gonna be, they're doing a lot of Zoom and so forth. What's, what's different this year, Kristen, is like usually we would send all of these contracts out, know that it was moving forward. Um, it's taking a little more time because we're waiting for certain, uh, timelines to develop on what we can do as far as gatherings and those types of things. Then we're talking with the advisors and saying, how are you gonna deal with this, that type of thing? So it's, it's not a huge undertaking by any means, but it's certainly just an added step. Um, so there, there's, there's those things that are going now, so.
Excellent.
Uh, student council also, if I didn't mention that, yearbook, um, the basic essentials that certainly, in my opinion, have to happen to make a school year, uh, complete.
Thanks, Mr.
Thank you.
And Superintendent, you're still on then.
Okay, awesome. Um, we do have one appointment, Samantha Grandal is, is a specialized tech two at the Winthrop Grade School. Um, she's been hired to that position. Two other things that are not on your agenda, I want to report, and I'm really excited about both of these. Uh, first of all, we signed a, a contract with, um, we didn't write the name, oh, yes, it's right here. Um, thank you, Colleen. With Constellation Energy for our, our contract for energy was running out in December. I partnered with, um, uh, town manager Culver and we are renewing together, which will get us a slightly better rate for the next three years. And so that contract has been signed and we are, um, we are, we are all set for the next three years with energy from Constellation. So pretty excited about that. Um, the other, a lot of, the last thing that I wanted to, to inform you about was, and I was actually gonna talk about this under new business and that I could talk about a little bit more then. But I, I met today with the staffs, the, the whole pre-K 12 staff. And I, we talked a little bit more about, um, preparing for red and then preparing for, um, snow days. So that if we could get approval from the Commissioner of Education, we could use our snow days as remote days and count them as, as student days. And Commissioner Macon called me directly, um, this afternoon to inform me. Uh, we had a nice talk because we, we, we have some history. Um, really nice talk, but she basically said, uh, that it's 100% approved. She said she actually didn't need to approve it because the, uh, uh, governor had, had executive order back last spring, which said they're waiving the 175 days requirement until January 15th. And then she expects that to be extended. Um, I get, had a chance to tell her what we are doing here in terms of four days of, of, uh, the, the students being here. And she was very, very impressed with that and assured me that that was, uh, something she was all on board with. Um, not just the ship, but moving forward, the notion of, of remote, of having those snow days, but using those as, as, as remote days. And, um, that, I want to talk more about that when we get to new business, because when we talk about the calendar, I wanted to tell you some of the work that we've, we've done in presenting this calendar to you. So you can ask me questions now or you can wait till new business.
Thank you.
And if there's no other questions, that's what I have for now.
Okay. Uh, the chair report. Um, school board members, I sent out an inquiry email about the MSMA conference and guess how many responded? Yeah, yeah, no one.
Oops. I said two.
Oh, so, um, what do you think, folks? Pretty soon, Colleen will have to, um, put in those applications. Colleen, I asked you earlier if there was a charger, if it was less or more than what we're usually, um, used to for the MSMA conference. It was not on any of my printed material, was it on any of yours?
So I searched and searched their website, um, the link, the agenda, everything. I could not find that answer either. I sent an email asking, um, I have not heard back yet.
I find that quite odd, but thanks.
I know, it was nowhere on there, I couldn't find it anywhere.
Yeah. So that, I was wondering, wow, are they gonna make it for free? It's a big moneymaker for them.
Right.
So, I don't know. Um, okay. So, um, do you want me to have this conversation with each one of you individually or will you text me real soon?
I, I, I feel like I've already commented. I, I think you already know my answer, that because I'm, my term is not being, um, renewed, that I am going to forego the conference and the expense this year.
Okay. Thank you. They correct?
I'll contact you, but I, I'm, I have to be there on Friday.
Right.
Well, I gotta be there on Zoom on Friday.
Right.
For the legislative delegation.
Yeah.
And so, uh, my question is, did I read it right, that the second day is Saturday?
Yes, it's Friday and Saturday instead of Thursday and Friday.
I'll go Friday.
You wanna go all day Friday? You don't, I checked, you don't have to, uh, register for the day to go to the assembly.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I did want to see the rest of the agenda, so.
Okay, well, it's posted, so we, back to me, so I can get back to Colleen.
Yeah, I will. I'll do that.
Jana?
What Saturday is it? I figured it was during the school day, so.
Halloween, the 31st.
Oh, seriously? Okay, I'll have to get back.
You gotta decorate your house.
Yep, it's the 31st. How about you, Ms. Bells?
I'm gonna have to get back to you as well.
Okay. Would you, would you all do that pretty soon, please?
Yes.
Actually, the MSMA conference is open to students, if either one of you are interested. It is on a Saturday, it's Friday and Saturday. So you may be interested in that or not. That's all I had. Uh, standing committee reports finance, Ms. Dykett?
Ooh, let me get open the warrants.
Okay.
Um, so Sue and I have finished. Nope. That was last one. Well, maybe this is last. Was 10, nine, the last one we did, Sue? Payroll five, five A, five B, five C, five B. Six, seven, seven A, seven B and eight. Um, Colleen and I will get these to you. Um, we are all caught up with payroll. Um, and I just were, were texting back and forth with Amanda and Sue. We're gonna go in on Tuesday, um, because we haven't been able to, um, do some of the COVID stuff because she hasn't pulled out in a separate folder. Um, and she's got it all labeled nicely in the warrant, but we just haven't seen the COVID folder part of it. So we couldn't, we've done a bunch in one, but not in the other, so we can't sign them yet. But we're gonna meet on Tuesday and, um, go through some of that.
So you wanna keep going with that then, Jana?
For now, yeah.
All right. Will, will this be your last time or are you gonna keep on trying to?
Um, I will, I'll see what, what we get done and what we have left, because I know that there are a few of them to get done. But I think once, um, Sue and I are familiar with Amanda's process, um, it, it'll go a little bit quicker and smoother because of that. Um, and then I, just knowing some of the days that she works late, um, is helpful for us too, or works in there so that we can stay a little later too. Um, so I think we'll be able to work that out fine.
Okay.
I will let you know though, if that changes.
All right. Very good, thank you.
And Mr. Hodgkin has a question.
Oh, there he is, looks like a statue. Mr. Hodgkin?
Actually, I don't have a, I have a comment. Um, and this is really for, for all of you to know, but primarily for Janet and Sue. Uh, we have submitted, I think Janet just mentioned our first reimbursement, because you remember the CRF one and CRF two funds. I'm gonna report next meeting on the CRF two funds. Uh, but they are reimbursement models. So we, we have processed our first warrant for CRF one funds. And so you, remember, those all have to be expended by December 30th, not 31st, December 30th. So you will be seeing a lot. If you remember, we have nearly $1.3 million between the two CRF grants, um, that we have to expend before December 30th. So you will be seeing a lot of them.
Thank you. Uh, policy committee, that's, we don't have anything to report today, but we will at the next meeting. Uh, Colleen, Sue, Colleen told me today that she had found several, uh, policies that had probably been voted on for the first time. And then COVID hit last spring and they, we just didn't get them done. So, um, those will be added to our list for, um, the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So we can get those cleaned up. Um, uh, negotiations, uh, Ms. Shumway?
Yes, so the school committee received a letter from Sharon Colton, who's the, um, lead negotiator for the WEA Teachers Union. And, um, it basically was the, the every year letter of intent to negotiate. So Mr. Hodgkin and Mr. Petrowski and I will just need to meet and chat about that, since it's an atypical year, and figure that out, and then I will respond back to their letter.
Thank you very much.
Can I just raise something?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Petrowski?
Yeah, I'd like to just raise this because, uh, I, I certainly do not know the answer now with the legislature not meeting this past spring summer. I don't know when they met the last time. But one of the things that was still outstanding was, uh, the commitment by the legislature to raise the minimum salary for teachers to 40,000. But there was a lot of problems with the funding of it. How much they were gonna fund beyond? It was as bad as saying that at one point, they were only talking about giving money for new teachers coming into the system. They weren't gonna worry about the veterans, etc. So I'm real interested, you know, obviously this is gonna play out in the next legislature. I'm, I'm interested in how it's gonna affect that negotiations, how much the state's gonna pay, how much localities are gonna be on the hook for. And so, uh, I'm also interested in the opinions that the union has as to where they think it's gonna go to. Ironically, the governor in talking about the things that she wanted to get done, has not mentioned, at least publicly, that she wants to continue to hit that minimum. And as those of you here on the board know, uh, Kristen and I and Superintendent, we've worked hard to take and raise our salaries so that they are competitive. And so that we do not have a major problem, uh, with funding them in the sense, any, any more money for the property taxpayers is a problem. But we tried to minimize that problem as best we've been able to do over the last few years.
So if I can just quick ask a clarification, Mr. Superintendent? So this year, the minimum is 35,000 and our first step is 34, 34,500. And the state was supposed to be chipping in to meet that minimum threshold if our, if our, um, scale didn't meet the minimum threshold. Is that actually happening? Are we receiving that $500 for all of our zero entry level?
We are.
Okay. So Joe, I think from what I understand is that if our salary scale does not reach next year's minimum, then the state will. then the state will, um, will chip in the difference to get those, those up to the minimum. But then again, since it's a negotiating year, if we don't negotiate to that minimum, I don't know if we're exempt from that. So these are all things that we'll have to look into and discuss. And we'll, obviously, whomever the negotiating committee is, in that with the new, um, board in January, will keep you guys informed.
Thank you very much. Curriculum, probably not, uh.
Nothing new to report.
Thank you, Ms. White. And renovation, new construction, and grade school maintenance, any updates, Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, not specifically to that, but, but something that is very related to that, because it's in the, the CRF two funds, is we have entered, I have entered into a contract with, uh, Siemens for the O two prime, uh, device, and, uh, related to the grade school in particular, where we had some concerns that we've addressed, uh, and they were great solutions for the fall. But the, the devices that were donated, the five devices that were donated to the school, we're purchasing out of COVID funds, thirty more of them. And so we will be able to put those into, um, the other, the other classrooms in the, I guess it's referred to as the south wing, learning the vernacular. South wing, uh, that do not have UNIVENTS, and so all of our grade schools will have either the O two device or the, um, or the standalone device that we had, we got five granted. And the rest of the schools will all have the O two prime, uh, the, the, the north wing of the grade school, and the middle school and high school all have the O two prime, um, thing that we talked about earlier.
All right, that's great, that, that should give people, our employees, hopefully, and our students, um, more, more confidence. That's great, thank you. Um, Mr. Stoneton, a sports update, if you please, how is it going? I, I asked for this, I'm guilty of, of this.
Sure.
And the, and the reason for it was that we put so much time, not, not half as much as you put into it, ma, mind you, but we just put so much time into, um, discussing that. And then we haven't heard how it was going for a while, so I, I asked for an update.
Sure, um, so I just, I wrote a few notes down here, just kinda wanna tell you how the season and went or is going for some folks. Um, golf was really short, it was about three weeks. Um, however, they were one of the few sports that could play statewide. Um, they played in the NBC championship and the qualifiers and lost by a stroke, uh, but managed to, uh, qualify for states, which, uh, they were sixth in the state, uh, so they did, uh, have a full season in a sense. Uh, boys soccer, we're hoping to get four games in tonight, they won nine to one over Oak Hill, uh, in, in three scrimmages. Uh, girls soccer over in Monmouth is, has two scrimmages and up to ten games this year. Um, just because they decided to play a different type of schedule, they're being, uh, they have been very successful. Um, and it's been a really good, uh, just like football has been, uh, with Monmouth. It's been a good relationship and they're hoping to continue that in the future. Uh, football, we had eight games, seven V seven this year. Uh, at first, everybody was quite hesitant about it, but the, uh, the kids are really enjoying it, so are the coaches. Uh, it's just nice to, to do something different. Uh, cross country today, actually, our girls ran in the qualifier, um, which is kinda weird, because the way things are working out this year, we're actually not gonna be doing anything for another, um, three weeks for states, if you do qualify, uh, because of the hundred person regulation, I guess, uh, it's, we're doing boys and girls on different days, where in the past we would do them together. Um, but we're also changing how you qualify for states. Um, they take the top two teams and then they take the top two runners that are not part of that team to go, uh, uh, race i- in the states, which is another one like golf statewide. Uh, and then field hockey, we had some scrimmages, had a, a really great game today, if anybody had a chance to watch that. The girls won in overtime, three to two. Um, and I think we'll end up having, uh, three or possibly four games by the end of the season, so. Um, one of the bigs, big things that, you know, it's, it's very time consuming that people bought into that was helpful, is that there's a daily screening that has to be done, um, online. Uh, the coaches, I gotta applaud, uh, it, it literally did change day to day of what we could do, how we were gonna do it. And they would, they were a line of communication for us, they would get those COVID screenings out to the students, they would review them, they would take them themselves, um, they set up a couple scrimmages so we could have parents there to watch their kids, um, which was a lot more work for them, uh, because then they had to monitor also the people that were coming in the door. I did talk to some middle school coaches, uh, there was some success at the Y this year, uh, with it, with a few things. Um, got a lot of really good feedback and, you know, I just, I just wanna relate to folks that this really was a learning year for everybody. And, uh, I mean that in the sense of, I think there's some things that we can take away to improve how we do things in the future, that will help, and a lot of that is, you know, by trusting the people that you hire around you, such as the coaches, um, that have those, you know, that input of how things work for them and what they see for new ideas that could help. I think the biggest flaw that I saw is that there was really a question of what the common goal was for the season. And what I mean by that is, um, I think you'd look at some groups and they would say, this is what I expected out of the season, and this is what it means to me. Uh, then you would look at other groups and say, this is what I think it means and so forth. And I think the coordination got lost in translation, and I can do a better job coordinating that in the future. But I, I, I wanna say, i- i- the, the way things transpired so quickly, I don't think anybody knew what to expect. But again, learning from this, I think it's gonna be important moving forward, that there's an expectation that is set on what the season should look like, because I don't think anybody really knew, and it did change on a daily basis and actually continues to do that. I think that also affected attitudes, I think that affected attitudes of our fans or players or coaches, other athletic directors, I can tell you, the officials. Um, they were good, and they were bad, and they were in between. And, and I think that really, it, it comes down to that everybody's very stressed out with COVID and, uh, walking into these situations has been, has been tough. Um, and people's tolerance for certain things may not be as what it, what it used to be. Whether you agree with that and it's right or wrong, um, it's, it is what it is. I, something I didn't expect that I heard back from a lot of my coaches, I observed it, but I thought it was just myself. It was actually quite a bit of anxiety from our athletes this year around the season. And I don't mean in the sense of, uh, whether, whether it was gonna be approved or not. You have to remember, all of these student athletes have been doing this since July, so they've been basically involved in the sport for four months and have not had a break. Um, and they've had the daily yo-yo of not knowing if they were gonna play or not. Lots of conversation i- in my, in my direction, that the anxiety of, um, not knowing what was coming the next day, which nobody can control, it's just, it, it is there. And I don't, I'm not saying there's an answer to that, but it was something that I didn't expect. You know, we talked about the mental health of having sports, um, and I didn't see it as a, a positive as much as I thought it was going to be. That was just an observation, but also something that was confirmed. I think the wants and needs compared to the expertise, uh, expectations and perspectives also created some anxiety. So I think that moving forward, again, it's gonna be really important to make sure that everybody's on the same page of what the sports season is for and looks like, regardless of what you're playing, I think it needs to be a, a cultural thing. Um, and I think it has to be a decision that we make as a group, meaning you folks, the A team, uh, just moving forward of what we expect to come out of that season and set that expectation and how we're gonna get there. I think one of the surprising things to me was that, even though, and I, and I just bring this up because we did have a lot of discussion about trying to control our students and what they participated in, the, the increase actually happened in the area of travel teams, that I don't know if they, uh, folks decided to do that because they weren't happy with what was being offered. Um, they just felt the need to do that, or maybe I just observed it more than I had in the past. But, um, it really didn't have an effect on not having people part of travel teams. It created situations that actually brought COVID near our school, uh, and, and, and kinda intermingled our kids. And, you know, we had, we had some travel teams that played with kids that had COVID. And, um, you know, I, I don't know how you address that, I just think it's important to bring to light. Um, I have publicly said, and I will say again, I'm, I'm not in support of, of doing those things if we're gonna do all the other safety precautions, but it's not my right to tell people they can't play on travel teams. I do have some concerns, uh, that if that continues, what that's going to bring to the table for our student athletes. Meaning if that's gonna be the continued norm, I don't know if you continue sports because it will spread quicker. And, uh, you know, I don't, I don't see it as a reason to have sports, um, meaning the travel team. If, if that's something that people wanna pursue, I certainly would encourage that. Um, I guess I'm just reporting back on it, because we spent a lot of discussion on it. Regardless of my opinion and so forth, it continued to happen, and it actually, I think, threatened what we were trying to do at our schools. Um, moving into the winter season, unless you wanna have some discussion around the fall.
Um, I just, I think you spoke to it real quickly, but I'm not sure, how were our spectators? Was everyone pretty cooperative with?
Yes, yes, um, our scrimmages, you, it, I was very fearful of this, and I, and I expressed this to the coaches. Our scrimmages allowed fans to be there because it was a, 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 a private thing in the sense that it was held by the school, which was really great, uh, the kids enjoyed that, uh, the parents got to see their kids play. Um, it was very safe, obviously, because it's, you know, the same cohort and so forth. Uh, but off of that, when we had league games, we were able to allow parents, starting with the seniors coming and do jobs. Uh, for example, today, we had eight sets of parents, you, running balls on the sidelines for the ball boys and making sure, you know, so, and that was, there was no, there was no kickback, I guess, for the lack of a better term, of others coming there and expecting to be there and not allowed in. Um, I, I will be very honest with you, I probably see, receive three to five emails a day on trying to get that extra inch of, hey, can I go do this? Can I, can I go, can you contact the, the away team and ask them if I can do this job or that job and so forth? And, and I get it, um, but the answer unfortunately is no, and that doesn't feel good a lot for me personally, just because it's negative. Um, and I don't like to have those interactions, uh, because I get it, that they wanna be around their, their student athletes. Um, that would be, I guess, my only feedback on the negativity is just that it's always looking for a little bit more. Um, and, and I really can't stress enough that if this is about the kids, then I think sometimes people need to put that in the backseat and, and allow the rules to play out the way they need to play out.
Right, and are we live streaming anything?
Yeah, we've, uh, I'm, I'm actually, I'm glad that you brought that up, um, that's something I did not write down. I think we've been very fortunate, um, Jeff and Melissa Perkins purchased an app where they could go in and stream every single one of our games that are at home. Uh, it's been field hockey, boys soccer, and, and football. Uh, a couple of the schools have been accommodating and allowed that to happen. Uh, I know today's field hockey game was livestreamed by Oak Hill on Facebook, and once we figured out how to do that for everybody, everybody was able to watch. Um, qualifying is being livestreamed by Miranda Cook Athletics, uh, last week, when they played seven on seven over at Gardner, they were also livestreaming. So I don't know, to my knowledge, if there's something that has not been livestreamed. Uh, I could be wrong, but I, I, I don't, I'm not sure that anything has been missed, so, um, and one of our cameras is now up and running.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent?
I just wanna add that, uh, one of the things, one of the suggestions from one of the school committee members was to get some equipment for live streaming, and that was in the, uh, that it, that was, that was approved in the CRF two funds. Um, I did have to modify it a little bit, because they would not allow us to, um, put in equipment to, with the rationale that it's supported athletics, uh, but I got some language that was given to me by the DOE to work around that. So, um, we will, uh, it, it has been approved, and we'll see what we can purchase with the amount of money that we were able to budget.
That's great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Stoneton?
Yeah, and the only other thing, I guess, that I, I know everybody's kinda waiting on is, uh, I know that last week, all of the parties involved to make a decision for basketball didn't meet. Um, and I should say winter sports, but it was focused on basketball, just because they were looking, they're looking at, um, the big dance at the end, moving backwards and how that spreads out to other sports. And I mean, the big dance by the, the state championship of how you get everybody into a civic center, which is not possible. What I did hear for feedback is that it was much more optimistic than when people went in. A lot of the parties are in, involved or on board, uh, it's just, it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be one of those things again, where sports is gonna be the exception, and the, the rules are gonna be bent, uh, to make it happen. Um, that's, that's, I mean, no matter how you split the hair, that's what happens. Because not now, now we're not gonna be dealing with kids in masks all day in school, but you may be hearing that they're gonna allow certain sports to happen, but they may not a- allow one acts to happen, uh, you know, some banned competitions, those type of things. So unfortunately, and, you know, I, I, I'm the biggest advocate of sports for winter, uh, we're gonna bend the rules again for sports and send the wrong message that sports is more important than other things, um, which is very disappointing, because, um, I've said for years that it's just part of what our student athletes are. Um, but I think, I think that there's some moving parts that feel that that's more important than academics and other things in, in our offerings.
So, Mr. Stoneton, uh, inequities, then?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, you know, I think I've been very clear that I think even this fall, that when we move forward with sports, that we certainly sent the message that it was more important, um, and that there were some inequities. Uh, just d- deciding where we stand as a, as a school system, you know, whether, whether, whether a governing body tells you what's right or wrong, doesn't mean that it's right or wrong. It has to be a decision that comes from us as a group. Um, and, and I, and I think that again, if we're, we're doing certain precautions in some areas that we should be doing them everywhere.
Do you anticipate a date when you will hear from the powers that be about winter sports?
Um, I don't, but what I did hear is that, and, and this did come from the MPA, is that at the forefront of all this is to come up with a timeline, um, that they're, they wanna get it right this time, and that means, so we're supposed to start winter sports a, a little less than a month from today, and we don't know if we are. So if we go two more weeks, I'm expecting that they'll start to push back. The dates that I heard was eleven sixteen, twelve sixteen, and one sixteen, uh, for start dates for winter sports, if certain things weren't in, in, in place. Um, so I've had, I've had conversations with people that are on the basketball committee, that are on, um, the civic center committee that put on the, the playoffs, those types of things, and that seems to be the consistent message.
Questions for Mr. Stoneton? I really appreciate that a lot, Mr. Stoneton, that.
Sure, absolutely.
Yep, um, and hang in there.
Yeah, no, hey, I appreciate it. It's a tough spot for everybody, and I don't think anybody wants to be here, and there's no right or wrong answer. I think Ms. Shumway said the best when we said, you know, it's a lose-lose, for sure.
Yep. Thank you very much.
You got it.
Okay. Uh, presentation on our remote learning day, Ms., uh, Ms. White. So this was a request, we, we have, as a school committee, been informed about, what, how the teachers are using Wednesdays, but we were asking the questions, how, how's it working out for students? So.
Fantastic.
Play from there.
Awesome, so, um, I can just echo exactly what you were saying, Ms. Guyer, that a lot of the discussion around, um, our remote learning project Wednesdays has been about the usefulness and the necessity for our teachers. But surprisingly enough, and I don't think it was really surprising, the feedback and the work completion from students has also been similarly positive. Um, teachers from the grade school through the high school reported that around ninety percent and above, um, have been participating in their Wednesday work. The assigned work itself varies a lot from school to school, kinda based on the developmental approprieness of, um, those kids and the rigor of the classes that the students are enrolled in. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about what the workload looks like for kids. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what the workload looks like for kids, um, on Wednesday, and then a little bit of um, some of the feedback that I got around it too. So in the younger grades, students are encouraged to do some low tech practice and tasks that are connected to what they've been doing in class. Um, it reinforces their new learning and what is happening when they are in person. Students are also engaging with remote scholastic news and mystery science, which is stuff that they've seen in the past. Um, our fully remote grade school students are recording themselves reading aloud and reflecting on seesaw. So the, the students who are already full remote are also doing those days and they're really interacting digitally versus, um, kind of with the low tech materials. In the upper grades, all students have a virtual check-in with their advisors each Wednesday morning. Um, several teachers mentioned that this is a great time to check in on their students' mental health. And they ask questions that are kind of centered around social emotional learning. During this weekly time, teachers in, um, the middle school and high school are also checking students' grades, contacting the students about their grades to set goals and the families as needed. So that's some real good direct connections that are helping our kiddos kind of prioritize on Wednesdays also. Um, in specific classes, the tasks, just like the grade school vary. Students may be asked to work on an ongoing project in music class. They might be maintaining their online blog based on some specific goal that they have um, in another one of their classes. Some classes, um, like in the younger students are also focusing on practice and reinforcement. However, um, the expectations that students might be working on low tech is not the same at the high school. And at the middle school, um, those students are working with their laptops and with the Google Classroom. So they're engaging with the Google Classroom. They could be potentially watching asynchronous lab simulations. Um, they might be getting direct instruction from short videos from their teachers. Um, the AP teachers are really thankful that they have, um, students who are working on this Wednesday because those courses are able to take advantage to really solidify those challenging topics and give them some more time to remediate. So even at the AP level, those students are, um, getting a little bit extra, more, more of what they need. Um, so some student specific feedback, some high school students have shared that they are, are enjoying Wednesdays. Some of the comments, um, that were given to the teachers and then forwarded to me was that, um, students appreciate the type of feedback they're getting from teachers on those Wednesdays too. They're getting quick feedback, um, and they're getting ones that are high quality feedback from their teachers because they have that time to really focus on it. Some students also shared that they enjoy having a midweek break from the building. Because we think about all of us kind of maintaining masks and distancing all day. It's, it's nice for the kids. They've said that they like having their masks off and being working, um, in a different space at home. So I was kind of thinking about how we're preparing our teachers for red on Wednesday, right? These remote Wednesdays are actually preparing our students for red. They're going home, they're accessing materials, they're setting up a pace. It might not be the exact same thing as when or if we go red, but whether we realize it or not, we've actually been preparing our students and they've been preparing themselves. So that was the big takeaway, I thought, um, kind of looking into that a little bit deeper so that I could give you guys a report on it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. White? That was good. I just have a question. It's really not quite associated, but what are we doing for, um, band and chorus? Are our folks allowed to sing or because of spacing, they're not able to or? I, I don't, I don't know. Are people putting masks over their wood instruments? I don't know.
So at the high school, we are conducting chorus class. We're able to space the students far enough apart in the pack to make that happen. Um, band is unable to, um, get involved yet because we lack the number of you, uh, instruments to ensure that we aren't using the same instruments over between students.
Thank you. Um, at the, could I add, Ms. Guyer, that at, at the middle school, we are not doing chorus. Um, Mr. Ciaglo can't, um, get it into his schedule yet, but we are doing band. And he is pulling two to five students during one of their mask breaks to go participate in small groups. Once a week.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. White. And so we'll just segue in if you like, um, uh, to the gap assessment. Um, last spring, eh, what was reported to the school committee is that there was a lot of concern on the part of the teachers about the beginning of this school year with so much being missed in the spring. And us, uh, assessing how much had been missed and what need, needed to be remediated and how to remediate they, as, you know, schedule change was even considered. And, and so, uh, we're interested in how we are assessing any kinds of gaps in their education as we go forward and still, you know, our, our students are still in-person education four days. So I assume then it's more and more difficult for teachers to teach what they feel is their sort of normal year full curriculum. So where, where are we going with that whole, um, gap identification and remediation?
Awesome. So I, I looked into some of that too for you folks. So as I gather data for this report, I was able to kind of reflect a little bit on what a gift the first eight days of professional development and planning were for our teachers. Um, a lot of the feedback that I got from our staff was centered around the work that was initiated those first few days when they were working in grade levels and in content area meetings. Um, so it's kind of like they were, they were able to actually do some vertical teaming, you know, working with those below and those above them to kind of identify some of those pieces and parts. So before school even began this year, our teachers were working collaboratively to figure out what learning, you know, happened to the last spring, which items weren't covered, even just with the same depth or rigor. Um, and then which students and identifying specific students moving forward might need a little extra support. So before they were even in the buildings, our kiddos, um, the teachers were working on anticipating the challenges that were going to occur this year. And what's great is that a lot of those discussions that began in the beginning of the year are still able to continually happen on those Wednesdays as people have that availability to be looking vertically and kind of identifying some pieces and parts. Um, so as far as assessing the gaps and what's happening currently, um, if we focus on work that's been happening right now to figure out, um, the learning gap since the students arrived, it's going to look really similar to what teachers already do annually. At the grade school, teachers are working on their fall reading benchmarks and doing running records. Um, through these, teachers are looking closely at fluency, accuracy, comprehension. Um, they're using this data to help create mini lessons and determine specific supports for students moving forward. I know their response to intervention team met today. And so part of that is the referral process is kind of looking at individual needs there. Um, as they're doing those running records. The grade school and middle school also, um, this week are, is finishing up the NWEA testing across all content areas. And that includes both the remote and the in-person students. Um, I just want to give a public acknowledgement to Mr. Delisle and Mr. Cray, who worked with me to figure out how we were going to make sure that we could gather some really um, good and useful data from the NWEA's with our remote students. So I just want to publicly thank them, um, for the time that they've given to me and given to, you know, over a hundred families really across our district. So thank you guys for.
Hey, our tech team, yay.
They are in this and, and, um, I think it's safe to say that not all schools are going to be doing NWEA testing because of the challenges it presents. And by working with a dynamic team, we're able to provide that to our teachers and that's part of our gap assessment. Um, and so I think that, so, so we can celebrate that. Um, uh, again, like NWEA isn't something different. It's something that our teacher is already comfortable with. Um, so as we're looking at, um, prioritizing learning this year, since they already have some comfort with the NWEA, they're going to be able to really use that data to look closer at what areas they need to start focusing, um, and prioritizing. Um, let's see here, I lost myself. Last year, the, um, high school math and English departments looked at SAT data to start addressing the gaps in their program of studies pre-COVID. So having done that previously, they're able to look at identifying areas that might also need attention this year moving forward. So what items were already gaps? Um, how are we looking at addressing those? And then this year, what do we have to do to continue with that? Um, the English department is also at the high school level looking at, um, starting use of the Common Lit, which is a reading pre-assessment with their kiddos. All students, I believe, um, in the high school will be taking part in that. Um, and they're using specifically these Wednesdays. So this kind of overlapped between my two reports. Um, they're using Wednesdays to help remediate some of those skills and fill those gaps. So as they're identifying them, some of that work on Wednesdays is really targeting that so that the students can start producing work at the correct level of rigor moving forward. So I think, um, currently, just the time of the year, a lot of work is being done right now to determine who needs additional supports, what do those supports look like? We're, we're kind of still in the phase of identifying what those gaps are in our kids' learning. And so from here out, I think the conversation is going to start shifting to how do we start closing that gap? Um, and how can we work collaboratively to prioritize the standards? Um, and make sure that the building blocks and the foundational skills that our kids are working on now is going to feed into the next and into the next, and that we're focusing on things that make sense in a progression.
Thank you. You, you sort of answered for me, one of my questions is after, uh, students identified as, um, having a gap, what do the supports for that student look like?
Yeah. And I think that, that really varies school to school and it varies teacher to teacher. Um, and I think that's part of, um, what are, what our teachers really are tasked with this year in addition to everything else. Um, once they identify those, those gaps, how are we starting that conversation? And really starting to prioritize what work should be done so that they're successful throughout their educational career here in Winthrop. But also are they having those, um, if we're thinking of like the Common Core standards, which of those are going to be really applicable moving forward? Um, and there's actually some guidance that's already been put out by Achieve the Core, which the DOE gave their stamp of approval on. Um, and so when teachers are start ready, when teachers are ready to start having those conversations, I'm happy to have them with the teachers, but we're still in, in the assessment mode. Um, and, and still it's October, so it's still, some of these things are still reasonably new, but I do kind of have a, a little thought moving forward around how we can start, um, having those productive discussions.
Um, I, this might not be a fair question for you, and if it's not, please feel free to say so. Excuse me, but na- pretty much nationally, um, accepted, important level for our students is that our children are reading in the elementary school at third grade level in the third grade. That seems to be, um, very important for our, our, our students to get to that point. And it's quite an indicator of future successes. Do, do we have any? Is it realistic to think that with the gaps we've had in education that our students will be able to achieve that kind of, um, of, um, learning by the third grade in reading?
So I think that, um, that would probably best be answered by those teachers for one. But secondly, I think that, um, as we start looking at what our instruction looks like in COVID times, we're going to start prioritizing things. And so looking closely at what those specific third grade benchmarks are and what those skills are leading up to it is, is the discussion that really needs to happen is if this is what our expectation and this is an indicator of future success, how can we build supports? And or really supplement the pieces and parts that are going to hold that up and looking closer at those benchmarks. Um, and without knowing a lot about that, Ms. Guyer, you know, I, I can't give specific.
I know it wasn't a really fair question.
But that's kind of where I would go from it, right? If we have, if we have some data that's going to inform us that from third, you know, this stuff at third grade, what are those third grade skills? Let's talk about that. Let's target it. Let's talk about how we can do that in person. And let's talk about how, if, when, whatever verbiage we want to use goes, we go red, that we don't lose those exact same foundational pieces because all the discussions we have right now with our staff have to happen around in-person and what ifs. So every conversation is twice as challenging to have and, and, and getting those answers is really, really tricky also. Um, it's a fair question, but it's one that I don't know if we're going to have the answer to.
Yep, yep. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course.
Other school committee members, questions for Ms. White? Really appreciate your reporting quite a lot, Ms. White. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, folks.
Yeah. Moving to new business. We're going to have a motion. I'm speaking to the public right now. We're going to have a motion to approve the revisions to the Winthrop Public School FY 2020, 2021 school calendar. And for the public, this is your opportunity to type in, in the chat, your comments that would help to inform the upcoming vote on the FY 2020, 2021 school calendar. And um, so while we're waiting for those, I will entertain a motion to approve the revisions to the Winthrop Public School FY 2020, 2021 school calendar.
So moved?
I can't. Moved and seconded and public now is your time. Please type in your comment in the chat about the calendar.
Jenny, would this be the time to bring up the discussion of voting day two?
I think it's probably going to creep in here.
Okay. I just don't want to miss that opportunity to discuss that.
Right. No, I think it's going to creep. I'm going to turn this over to the superintendent here to go through the revisions and, and why. And I think that, ah, I think that we'll make sure that, um, that discussion about voting day is not lost.
Okay, thanks.
Superintendent?
Okay, thank you. Uh, I did send out a memo with your board packet, your committee packet, um, explaining the changes. And, and there's more backstory to this, so I want to take some time to do that. Uh, but then some of this is a little bit of the conversation I had with the staff today when I went around to, to meet with all the staff. Um, but when, after the school committee voted to extend the, the Wednesdays until the end of the school year, uh, we knew we needed to make modifications to the, um, calendar. But then in looking at it more closely, you probably won't get to see this very well. But this is, this is the draft I worked on and it's quite marked up. Uh, we spent.
You all have one.
Well, no, no, this is the one I.
Not your marked up one, yes.
Yeah, yeah. You didn't get my marked up one. Okay. So anyway, we, I went through and I, first thing I noticed, I was just looking at all the stuff that's on the right was the, um, it had to do with five snow days in this calendar. And there was a workshop that was left on there. And I recall uh, some conversation about not having workshop days. There is two comp days that are still left on here. Um, and early release days that were still on here. So made some assumptions and, and, you know, took some, some guesses. Um, but, uh, that was part of my conversation today with the whole staff. But so one of the first, we made a lot of changes. We took off the, the workshop day that was March 19th, made that a student day. Uh, we flip-flopped the, uh, uh, April, uh, 16th comp day, made that the 14th, which is a Wednesday. That will now be a comp day and not a, not a process planning day. Uh, made the 16th a, uh, a student day, knowing of course that there may be um, some parents and possibly even some staff that have already made plans uh, for that, what was a, a non-day for them. And when, and talking about this, we said, we just need the flexibility to address those, um, particularly staff. And I think that families will, will, um, that were planning to go somewhere on the 16th will probably still go somewhere on the 16th. Um, so, but my point is that we also saw that there was, um, early, five early, five snow days built in. I think it said five, I crossed mine off. So that made our last student day according to this calendar, uh, like June 18th. And so we made all those changes and, and, and made those adjustments, took off all of our early re- release. I forgot to say that with exception, exception of the last day of school and the day before Christmas break. Um, which is a half day for the students, not for the staff. And, um, so started, I just started counting the days when my calendar gets really messy. Um, to see how close to the 175 that we're not being held to, um, that we actually were. And actually, if we were allowed to have snow. that we actually were. And actually, if we were allowed to have snow days be remote learning days and counted student days, then our 175th day was June 11th. So that meant that we would have graduation as planned, two days after our last student day, which we didn't feel was a, was something that was going to be very well accepted. So I talked to Mr. Campbell at the high school, then I talked to area schools to try and make sure we didn't have conflict. And so we made the decision to move high school graduation to June 6th. So a lot of changes, I will say that with the, with what the commissioner shared with me today, that we will get 175 educational days in. And I think our kids are actually going to get more education than a lot of other school systems because we do have our students in person or remotely, in person 80% of the time and those who choose to be in person. And because of the way we're structuring our Wednesdays, that those count as student days as well. But so we will have our students in person 80% of the time, while most school systems are doing it 40%, 40% in person and 60% remote. So the commissioner was actually very, very impressed with that and said something to the effect of when this all slows down, I don't know what that actually means, but when this, when this, we get some time, she'd like me to, to write in. And so she does a little newsletter and talks about places that are doing things a little bit different and she thought this was, was pretty exceptional. Again, I know for some people they didn't like this, but the whole notion of we, I think our schedule, and I thank the committee for their support, is responsive both to our students and our parents. Even though there are kids, some people prefer us to be in five days a week and also to our staff. I think our staff, as you heard last meeting, is so appreciative of the recognition of how hard they're working and and the gift of Wednesday for process and planning is enormous. So made all those changes and that's where you ended up with this nice clean copy that you all have. With the big changes, oops, still says on mine, June 13th for graduation, but it shouldn't say June 6th. Let's see what you guys received.
Mine says June 6th.
I'm sorry, I have multiple copies. So the one I'm looking at that's actually in my board packet does say June 6th. And so that does appear to have all the change. I'm going to throw this one away because it's not accurate. I'm just going to work from my marked up copy and the one that was sent to you packet. So yeah, June 6th.
Ms. Shumway?
I just have a quick question. So the two teacher comp days typically are for the conference days that they have parent teacher conferences. And in this this strange world, can you just let everyone know kind of what the format of those conferences? Either has been or will be?
Sorry. There's, it is a little bit messed up. And so had conversation both with the association and with the administrators, whatever, that we're not going to schedule two specific days for which they are in their comp time. We're going to ask them to keep track of the communications. And I guess I want to go on record publicly as saying that Jim Hodgkin, if you were running, Joe, if you, if you make it to the legislature, I would be in favor of eliminating parent teacher conferences. I think parent teacher conference days are are really unnecessary. I think it's irresponsible of teachers to wait for a particular day, and I don't think they do that. And I think it's irresponsible of parents to wait for a particular day, and I'm not sure they do that. Our, our, this year in particular, our staff are communicating on a regular basis with their with their students and their parents. And they're just going to keep track of that as they've always done it. And then they, I think what's always been the guideline, they have to accumulate essentially 14 hours of communication back and forth with the parents. And for that, they will receive those two comp days, which are now on Wednesdays.
Okay, so, so I under, I completely understand that. But that essentially is saying that that 14 hours could just happen between, I mean realistically, if we think about it, that with one particular student and one particular family and one teacher, that they could have this communication of 14 hours. So I wonder if there could be a further guideline of having at least at least one communication perhaps with the, all of the parents of the entire class. Just so that there's some sort of, you know, update of progress or whatnot, not necessarily specific to each student. That can happen in a one-on-one, but I just know that sometimes parents don't communicate if it seems like nothing's, you know, nothing is a problem. So that would just be my one suggestion is add just a little, one little other perimeter to that.
I would, I think that's a great suggestion. And if nothing else, we're to pick a, and let the school sort of decide both in the fall and in the spring to reach out to the parents to say, you know, to call us, whatever, give them the opportunity, create the opportunity for them to make that communication. And I think that's a good idea.
Campbell, you came on. Did you want to make a comment?
Well, I just wanted to add to Ms. Shumway and to support her position. At the high school, we discussed today how important it would be to reach out to all parents. And we're going to start sending home comment cards to parents to share good things that happened in, in our classroom. So we are, we are, we are already there.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think that communication is really critical for, and though we're not going to schedule, typically I know you schedule a couple, either a couple of afternoons or evenings. While we're not going to do that, I think that notion of letting people know what we're doing and some people may, as I said, they may still be used to looking at when is this going to happen? And we just need to communicate that with all our parents.
Absolutely.
School committee, other thoughts? Ready to vote on it then?
Well, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Superintendent.
I just want to, I, I, I guess I'm just thinking about Janet's comment about the, no, I don't know that we want to put that on this. I don't think it goes on the calendar, but I don't know.
Mr. Petrowski, I see from the chat here is going to make a motion that will just add to the agenda.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep. So are we ready to vote on this motion? All right, I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett? Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Yes is what, motion passes unanimously. Wow, that's a pretty exciting calendar there.
It's busy.
Well, it is very busy. I think it's very appropriate and I hope that we can make it work. I'll give Mr. Petrowski a moment to verbalize this motion that he has printed in the chat. And we'll, we'll take it from there. Mr.?
I think it's appropriate in these times that we try to both acknowledge the seriousness of the coronavirus, but also the importance of our community feeling safe when they come and vote and to keep our teachers and our students at the high school appropriately away from this particular activity to make it the best activity that we could have. And certainly after watching the primary that took place last June and the amount of people that were necessary to be there to help with the voting and the cleaning and everything else. We just do not want to have our students and teachers forgetfully, I wouldn't say they're doing intentionally, but all of a sudden showing up in the middle of the voting place making them clean it all down again, et cetera. So I'm suggesting that we excuse the high school on Tuesday, November 3rd. And that the high.
You make a formal motion, please? Would you make a formal motion?
I will move that we excuse the high school on Tuesday, November 3rd to allow the town to conduct its voting in the gymnasium without any interruptions.
I modify that before it's seconded?
Sorry.
I just don't, I don't want it to be an excuse day. It would be a remote day.
Right.
Right? So that they would have school still that day, but they would just be remote learning.
Mr. Petrowski, do you want to adjust your motion, please?
I'd like to just hear any discussion that might be first before I would agree to it. I mean, I, I agree to it, but the point is, I just think I'm okay. I just, somebody second that at that?
I mean, I'll, I'll second it if the word is changed from the high school is excused to the high school is remote.
Okay, the high school is remote on Tuesday, November 3rd.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Superintendent?
I feel like I have to jump in. I feel kind of badly because I, I got that guidance this morning. I will tell you, this is a conversation that I've had with, with Mark had requested some time ago, actually, to consider. Well, first of all, he asked me to consider talking to town manager Colbrook about not using the high school and looking for some other site. And we, he, we did have that conversation. He really felt that the success of the state elections in July and the fact that we expect a significantly larger turnout was good, was really important that we have it at the high school. So when I, when I reported that to Mr. Campbell, he, he asked if we would consider making that a remote day. And I honestly, I'll tell you, I sat on it because I wasn't really sure and I intended to bring it up. And so I did have some conversations last week and did report to him that I felt as if we were going to be expected to have school and make the necessary precautions. So I did tell him that last week. It's just serendipitous. Incredible timing, I guess, whatever you want to call it, that the guidance came out this morning. So I felt that I had a responsibility to pass that on to the school committee. And then I've had a number of you that responded, well, you responded to each other about how you felt about that. And so that sort of led to this decision tonight. But you know, I, first of all, I want to make sure that I'm clear, the DOE did not tell us we couldn't do it. It was another conversation that I don't think we need to dig into that led to that communication. And when the guidance came out, I think the school committee, and that's what I responded to a couple of you today, that if you, if you wanted to have it be a remote day for the high school, which is, was the initial request, then you know, then we could have the conversation and you can make that decision.
I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll just weigh in a point of view. So I know that in the past for years at the high school, gym was being used for something else, that it was just somewhat closed off. And that there wasn't, just wasn't access to it. I think that in these, in these times, these present times, that we've all had concerns that some of the protocols with coronavirus were leading to maybe our buildings not being as safe as they once needed to be. Or the standards that we had been following or the recommendations that we had been following. And I think that this kind of falls into that category, that if we're bringing a lot of people from the community in a contentious time, because I mean, regardless if we're in Winthrop or not, this, across the nation, it's pretty contentious and we can't guarantee that that's not going to spill over into the voting area. And it would be naive of us to think that if we brought groups of people onto our grounds, that that we couldn't control, that that wouldn't necessarily put our students in jeopardy. So I think that the cleaning is one side of it, but then I also think that the safety is another. That I wouldn't feel comfortable having students be in the building and staff and teachers being in the building for a voting day unless there were police officers at the door with where the access into the school building was. And I don't know if that's realistic to, to do. So since we have worked so hard to allow remote learning to happen, then this actually could be used as a practice to see if all of the planning that we've been doing, to see how it's, how it's going to work and then keep our students safe, keep our buildings, you know, keep it limited, knowing that there's not going to be any cross contamination or cross exposure. So I am in full support of it going to a remote high school day.
I have to say that I'm tending towards opposing this motion. And I had a discussion with the superintendent last week. But I think that the possible contentiousness is not something that I had considered. I also want to hear from Ms. Dykett because I know that she, she and her sister helped with the primaries. And so I have a couple of questions for her and I know that Joel was there most all day long. The superintendent spent a couple of their hours there and I want to hear from Mr. Campbell. But in historically, when I was working at what is now the grade school gym, all voting was, in the town was done in that grade school gym for years, for 20 or 30 years. And there was never any difficulty. Of course, those were pre-COVID times. But there was never any difficulty at all with migration of students into an area or, or voters out of their area. With the, with the high school gym, I think that it could be easily barricaded off so that students wouldn't wander into the gym, nor would voters wander out of the gym. I, I do have a concern about parking, directing voters around so that they go into the gym. Where would they park? Would we ask staff to park up at the middle school parking lot? Would we ask students to try to double up, which isn't a great idea, so that there would be more parking? And then the other question, even after the gym is used Tuesday, the voting booths should be all taken down and that whole area cleaned before our students come in and use it Wednesday. And how quickly would, well, before they come in on Thursday. So how quickly would all of that happen? So I, Ms. Dykett, can you tell me about what you think the parking was like during the primaries? Which should probably be about 20% of the load that we'd have on that parking lot this year for a presidential vote?
Yeah, I don't know if I can really speak to that because I was inside most of the time and it wasn't out in the parking lot. But I also was not there until five o'clock at night.
Oh, okay.
My concern with not only just parking, I believe it's juniors and seniors that have sort of senior privileges so they can come and go. I'm worrying about kids leaving and coming and then the amount of traffic that is going to be anticipated by the town throughout the, the school day as well. And even kids walking in and out through the parking lots with cars going in and out through the parking lots unless things are like maybe Kristen said, either with police or actual people out there directing traffic to ensure that, you know, safety is, is happening.
The superintendent has spoken with the town manager about being able to use the police up there.
And then also, you know, you mentioned barricading. And I, you know, I grew up in the high school having, you know, voting in there and things like that. And I get what you're saying. And I, you know, I grew up in the high school having, you know, voting in there and things like that. And I get what you're saying, but times have certainly changed. And being a locked down school, you can't really barricade the gym doors safely. Unless, in my opinion, you actually have somebody standing there to monitor that as well. So I guess for me, it's whether or not the town, I'm assuming, would provide the personnel to make sure that, because you can't really lock those gym doors, because if there was ever a fire drill or evacuation, you've got to be able to go in.
They're breaker bar doors, so you can lock them so that you can't get into the gym from the rest of the building. And then to prohibit people from going out, the voters, you would put mats up there so that they can't get out, but they're easily knocked aside, their breakaway doors. But they would go out the side doors anyway.
Okay. But yeah, I just, I mean, those were some of my concerns with safety. And actually keeping someone and not that, hopefully anyone wouldn't sneak into the school. You know, they just come in and vote, but if it gets really busy in there, if there's just not eyes on that, I, that just concerns me a little. And then I never even thought about what Kristen said about contentions and possibly even, I mean, I don't know if there's protest, I mean, I just, yeah. I would feel safer if, if students were not there at least. And I know Erin put in the chat about staff, but that's another discussion.
Okay, I, no, it'll be a remote day, so I think students will be there. So Erin Weeks's question was, does this mean that staff will not be allowed in the high school that day? I'll, I'll let Mr. Campbell or Mr. Hodgkin take that question.
Mark, I think you wanted to add some other stuff, so why don't you jump in there?
Mark, yeah.
Oh, I, I think student safety is my biggest concern. You know, as Janet brought up, kids will constantly leave him because of privileges. You know, and they, I don't know how to say this without sounding offensive, but anybody can vote and that means that we could have people up there that don't have rights to their children, who may see their children or interact with their children, or have the potential to interact with their children. We have sex offenders that could be up there in the building. Just that, that part right there bothers me the most. I want to keep my, my students safe. Far as, as far as the teachers, you know, I mean, I think today we discussed how this day could be a great lead in to us going red. We've been doing a lot of preparing. So this would be a good test for us. Are we really ready? And that, as, as I said, in the fall, early fall, 50% of my staff is new. So, you know, it's going to be a real good opportunity for them to see whether or not they truly have done all the preparations they need to, in case we end up going red.
I'm sorry. I think it could be a great shakedown day for, for remote. Yeah.
Yep.
Ms. Bells?
Just to springboard off Mr. Campbell, would that mean it would be, that Tuesday would be more like the Wednesdays? Or would that be more of a, a true red day where there would be interaction, like classes that they would have to attend?
So that's a Tuesday, so that's a white day. So our students will be attending their blocks 2, 6, 5, and 8 classes remotely with their teachers through Zoom lessons or Google Chat.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Danda Whaley, were you?
I was, I was just going to ask the same thing, whether if it was, if I was going to have to go to a Zoom call or if I could sleep in.
Your student-ness there, Mr. Danda Whaley. Ms. Groob, do you have any thoughts that you want to share with us?
I think it would be pretty good practice for us to see how that would go with having the Zoom classes. And I think the teachers so far have done a really great job of communicating with us through, like, throughout the year, but specifically on Wednesdays. So I think having that remote Tuesday could be a good experience.
Any other comments? Ms. Bells?
Well, it would be kind of neat to see how that Tuesday went, and then they would have Wednesday, the next day, as teachers to get together and be brief, I guess that would be a word.
Yep, yep, good word, yep. Anything else, folks? Ready to vote? I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I think you won me over. I'm yes as well. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Zero. Pardon me?
Thank you.
Very welcome. Good luck with that. Good, good luck with that practice day.
Well, anxiously await how it went.
The superintendent would like to talk to you.
There's Mr. Superintendent.
I mean, obviously, it goes without saying, but I don't want it to go without saying that we obviously will need to communicate this to our parents ASAP. And I'm going to trust Mr. Campbell and Mr. Stone to, to take the lead on that.
Okay, got the high sign there from Mr. Campbell. He's on top of it. At this time, at this time, it's the opportunity for the public to make a comment, type it into the comments section. We, oops, I ju, I just did something to my, my, type it into the chat section. And it can have, it can be a comment about anything having to do with Winthrop education. How many people do we still, oh, we still have 29 folks here. That's very cool. All right. I'll just, I'll just wait a moment here to see if anyone wants to make a public comment about Winthrop education. This is where I need to sing a song. One of my favorite songs to sing is, no, no.
The Jeopardy countdown.
I know I did Jeopardy last time, but I, I, I have to, you know, this is where I'm not prepared. As the chair, I should be better prepared to have some music at this, this interlude here. I see nothing coming in in the chat. So, the school committee comments. We'll start with Ms. Dykett, please.
Um, I just, I was, thought about this in the meeting. And I know it's a while away, but I don't know if any thoughts have been going on about graduation. And I don't expect an answer about that. But I know, you know, last year obviously was a unique year. And I don't know if this year is going to be any different or much different. So I don't know if you have started thinking about plans for possibly doing graduation in a different way than possibly in the gym or in the pack or any of that. And if you haven't, I don't know if you might want to start thinking about that just in case, because everyone will be scrambling. I think what knocked it out of the park last year with graduation, not that they couldn't change it and do something different, but I don't know, just, just thoughts about that with, you know, all this coming forward and not knowing what we're going to be like then as well. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Mr. Danda Whaley?
Um, not much on my end, but the students, we have our mock election this past Monday, and those results came in, but they're still kind of calculating the results throughout the 106 other schools that took, or 105. But, so we have that. So that was kind of exciting for young students who don't get the privilege to vote yet, just yet, to do that.
You don't have any results to share with us?
I do have some results. I have them right here. I don't, I don't, I guess I cut out of them up. So we had for president, we had 55 votes for Donald Trump, and we had 49 votes for Vice President Biden. And for Senate, we had Susan Collins, we had 49 votes. And for Sarah Getty, we had 32 votes. And for Congress, first district, we have 63 votes for Allen and 46 votes for Pingree. And, and then also, our clubs have been kind of moving a little bit. So that's been kind of fun to see, like the drama program, and they've met virtually all of them. Student Council has also met and is meeting tomorrow on Thursday. Student Leadership, and I'm excited to see how that goes.
Thank you. Ms. Bells?
I just wanted to congratulate the field hockey team. They had a kind of an exciting game. They were down 2 to nothing, then they came back and tied it, went into overtime, and then scored an amazing goal. So congrats to them. And it was really fun to watch.
Thank you. Ms. Lasky wrote in that the grade school had a mock election also. We had 113 votes for Biden and 109 votes for Trump. We only did the presidential election. Wow. All right. Ms. Groob?
I would like to thank all of the staff for doing their best to get students involved and to continuing to make sure that all our voices are heard. Like Josh said, a lot of the clubs have started, and that has been really great to see students participate in that. And I know that students don't always give the best feedback or express how grateful we are. We're definitely aware of the great effort all of the adults are putting in to communicate with us. And it has had a huge impact on making us all feel a lot more comfortable this year. And it is really appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you for that. We, we all like to feel appreciated. Mr. Campbell, who has this clapping, and Ms. White's clapping away. We, we appreciate that a lot. I, I meant to ask our two student, school committee members, have you figured out a way to communicate to the students some of these decisions that are being made for them about their education? I mean, there's been a lot tonight's meeting about just the quality of your education.
I mean, Josh has his wonderful morning announcements. And we are both on student council, so we will definitely get more involved in sharing some information through that.
Yeah, I think a lot of it's just sometimes word of mouth, but yeah, no, it's definitely something that we could work towards in putting it in an announcement and maybe making those a little bit more enjoyable in the morning.
Thank you. Mr. Petrowski?
Thank you. I thought tonight was a very good meeting. One thing, I've been interested in talking about this whole process of producing a gap as a result of the COVID-19 problems that some of our students last spring might be experiencing a loss of some of that education and having difficulty this year. And obviously, from Megan's comments and what, what you, what the teachers are trying to do, I think that's just great. I think that's reassuring also to our community that we are trying to make sure that our students can catch up or keep pace or even exceed that. So I was excited about that. Also was excited that Joel did such a great job of explaining what's going on athletically. There's no question that there's a lot of enthusiasm out there in our community for athletics. There's also a lot of concern by some parents about what's happening to their kids. Are they safe? And there are some, even some parents who have spoken to me and said, gee, I wish my kid was doing it this year, because it appears that things are going as well as they can go. And certainly, a lot of that responsibility or a lot of the congratulations belongs to the coaches and the other volunteers that they've had there. So I'm really, really pleased with that, too. And finally, I think the decision that we've made to take and have our students go remote in the high school so the community can vote, can vote safely in our gymnasium and others can be safe as well. Very important decision. I'm really glad to see it. So thank you for the good meeting tonight, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you all for the meeting. And
I looked over the agenda for the 31st. I can, I can do that Saturday.
Thank you.
I don't know, I'm assuming someone will register me and then I'll get an email with how to join in and all that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not real familiar with what they're going to do for the COVID thing, but pre-COVID, I always got the numbers of who's going to go and gave it to Colleen. Colleen registers us and sends in the check, so I'll, I'll be chatting with Colleen. I'm going to hear from the rest of you, I'm sure about, Ms. Shumway. I'm not sure about anybody else. Well, and I'm sure about you, Dykett, sorry. But I, I need to hear from the rest of you. Please text me, maybe, what's, by the end of the week? Is that, is that fair? Everybody go like this? Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you very much. It'll just save me from having to reach out and contact each one of you, which I appreciate. Okay.
Am I going to be able to go?
What's that?
Am I going to be allowed to talk? I haven't gone yet.
No, I already checked you off on my list. Are you sure you're going?
You haven't, I, you didn't, you did not start with me. You started with Ms. Dykett and went around and, and had skipped me.
I know, I know. I decided to change the order, and so I just flipped over it myself. I'm sorry, but I just checked you off.
That's okay.
Apologize, Ms. Shumway.
That's okay. I just have, I just had, usually it's not very important, but I had wanted to make sure that everyone was aware in a different venue, that we have two write-in candidates for the open seats for school committee. I know that it's been shared on Facebook, but for those people who are not on Facebook may not know that we have two write-in candidates, Kelly Hooper and Timothy West. And I've put their names in the chat because Kelly is spelled with an E-Y, and I believe that that makes a difference in how you write it. So anyway, so I'm going to share that with everybody so that when you are voting, you, if you feel that you would like to write in candidates for school committee, that you can do that. And then the other quick thing that I have is that, you know, I think that we've all been maybe a little nervous, or our awareness has been heightened a bit because we have seen schools have to be shut down because of a case here and there. I just wanted to reiterate that Winthrop, you are doing a great job, and all of, all of our efforts are, inside the schools are keeping everybody safe. And you know, thankfully, and I don't even want to say it, that we've been able to remain in person. But I also do want to say that if all of us schools around us are following the guidelines that we're following, it seems to be working. It seems that they've had a case in school. They've decided to go red out of precaution, but that those cases haven't spread throughout the school. And so I just want everybody to remain diligent. I know that it's so easy to just be like, okay, we don't have a case, so we'll let our guard down, but we don't want to have an outbreak. So I just wanted to tell everyone you're doing a great job, but, and just keep it, keep it up so that we can keep our students in person for as long as we can.
Thank you very, yeah, that, that, that all was very important. And I'm glad you put up those two write-ins. So that's great. And that, of course, is the segue for me. I've been saying the same thing to our community for two months now, maybe longer. But it really does. But it really doesn't matter what you think about this virus, whether it's all a hoax or you're very concerned about it. It doesn't really matter. There's no room for rebelliousness in our schools. We we need cooperation. We need everybody's cooperation to make this in-person education work. And we all know that the in-person education is better than the remote, no matter how good we make the remote, the in-person is better. So the magic word is cooperation, everybody. And I have to thank you for the amount of cooperation that you've given us so far. And I'd like to think that we won't have to become really, really good at remote. Superintendent Hodgkin?
Yes, something something really important I forgot to mention earlier. And actually, I was wondering if Sue was going to bring this up when she spoke, but the Back to School Committee met today. And we didn't meet for very long because the we we updated a few things, answered a few questions. But then we talked about the continuation of this committee and the the people that were there voted, I shouldn't say voted, all agreed that we were going to essentially discontinue the committee. As some of the people have been on this committee since last June. And all the people that were there essentially agreed that if a particular issue comes up, that we need the specific feedback of this committee to be willing to do that. But I just want to publicly thank everybody. I noticed Dr. McConnell is on this. She's been amazing in her contribution, the gift of her time. She's been, you know, a great person for us to lean on with with advice. But there are a lot of other people that are on this Zoom tonight that have been a part of that committee. Like I said, many of them since last June. So we did have a, you know, a fine meeting today, really good meeting today. And we're not planning to schedule any additional meetings unless something specific comes up.
So you don't think that committee should be a life sentence?
Well, I wouldn't have said it that way, but no, I think they've, I think, you know, I will tell you one of the things that was suggested. I just wanted to say this publicly because one of the things I did look at was a lot of these people have given so much time. I did look into possibly using some of the COVID money to for some sort of small stipend or just whatever. Yeah, it wasn't, and it's not permissible at any of the three, so which is too bad. So I really do appreciate the hard work. And I think a lot of the stuff that that Kristen just said and you just said are a direct result of the hard work of of the people on that committee. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Sue, you're on.
Move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.